To amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1041, Electric Scooters, in regard to various provisions. Number three, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title V, Businesses, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 520, Barbers and Beauticians, Section 520-010, Regulations, in regards to the hours. And number four, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Adding, Chapter 2.68, Department of Human and Community Services. We have Resolutions 1 to 32. Number one is to approve agenda amendments. Number two, approve payroll 9520 to 91820, and also 91920 to 100220. Number three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve request for use of city property and street closing, requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center Incorporated, for chalkboard. In honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it's at Monument Square Park, intersection of Livingston Avenue, Liberty Street, and George Street, Thursday, October 8th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, October 9th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The rain dates are Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, from 8:00 to 6:00 a.m., and Thursday, October 15th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Five, we have approved request for the use of city property, requested by Kevin Middleton. The location is Boyd Park and Amphitheater, house music event with local DJs, Saturday, October 10th, 2020. The rain date is Saturday, October 17th, 2020, time is 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Number six, approve award of contract with Technology Incorporated, for the purchase proprietary support subscriptions for the police department. It's a 12-month period commencing November 1st, 2020, and ending October 31st, 2021, not to exceed $4,846.80. Seven, approve award of contract with SHI International Corporation, for security cameras with accesses, accessories, rather, for the police department, not to exceed $70,466.68, Omni Partners Co-op. Number eight, approve amendment of resolution R.081923. The reason is to pay the final invoice of May and June 2020, with Symmetry Life Insurance Company, for stop-loss coverage for Aetna Medical Plan and CVS Caremark Prescription Plan, not to exceed $174,626.10. Number nine, approve resolution authorizing placement of banners and signage in the right-of-way, requested by Johnson &amp; Johnson. Ten, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant, State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, New Jersey Traffic Safety, for 2020 Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Year-End Holiday Grant. Number 11, authorize tax collector to transfer overpayments on taxes and utilities. Twelve, approve Chapter 159 budget insertion, Middlesex County, for CARES Act reimbursement grant three. The amount is $445,196.63. Number 13, authorize purchase by the water utility, under New Jersey State Approved Co-op, number 65 MCESCCPS, the Educational Services Commission of the New Jersey Pricing System, from Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated, for roof restoration services for the water utility, not to exceed $231,665.25. Number 14, approve ABC liquor license renewals, 2020 to 2021. Fifteen, approve amendment of resolution R.092016. The reason to add certification of funds for public property, in the amount of $3,500, with J. Swanton Fuel Oil Company Incorporated, furnish and deliver fuel, oil, and diesel. The amount is $3,500. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Number 16, approve request for solicitation of funds, requested by the Salvation Army in New Brunswick, to help the needy in our community. The dates are November 6th, 2020, to December 24th, 2020. Specific location, dates, and times, the corner of Route 27 and George Street, the corner of Paul Robinson Boulevard, formerly Commercial Avenue, and George, the intersection corner of Route 27, Albany Street Bridge, and Route 18, Highland Park exit off of Route 18, New Brunswick. November 6th, 2020, to December 24th, Fridays from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Giving Tuesday Project, November 24th, 2020, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, NB PAC Livingston Avenue, November 6th through December 24th, Fridays from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. At the New Brunswick Train Station, Giving Tuesday Project, November 24th, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monument Square tree lighting is yet to be determined, and the Hyatt Regency at Two Albany Street, with Carriage Rides Pickup, is to be determined. Number 17, approve amendment of resolution R.071949, additional amount of $339.62 for public property with J. Swanton Fuel Oil Company Incorporated, furnish and deliver fuel, oil, and diesel. The amount is $339.62. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Number 18, approve resolution to provide police traffic control officer allocation for milling of various streets, city streets. Specification number 84020B, not to exceed $12,125. Nineteen, authorize application, execution of grant agreement, 2021 Local Freight Impact Fund, with New Jersey Department of Transportation, Jewels Lane Roadway Improvements, Project ID Number LFIF2021, New Brunswick City 0008. Twenty, approve amendment of resolution R.051917. The reason is to extend temporary closure of a portion of Church Street and Spring Street, temporary closure of Church Street, from Kirkpatrick Street to Spring Street, and a section of Spring Street bounded by Albany Street and Church Street, is requested by the Director of Engineering and Public Works. Number 21, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure, requested by Maxim Crane Works. The reason to place a crane on French Street for the purpose of lifting HVAC units on the roof, and removing support steel, at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. French Street will be closed from Joyce Kilmer Avenue to Patterson Street, Saturday, October 10th, 2020. The alternate date is Saturday, October 17th, 2020, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Number 22, approve renewal of liquor license with special ruling for rubbish in the Rique Cigamarra, which is an inactive liquor license, number 121433033004, 2020 to 2021. Twenty-three, approve renewal of liquor license with special ruling for C&amp;T1LLC, which is inactive, liquor license 121433077014, 2020 to 2021. Twenty-four, approve application for up to $250,000 of COVID-19 assistance funds, from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Twenty-five, approve amendment of resolution R.061965, change order number one to credit with Brave Industrial Paint LLC, for Home News Row Tank Rehabilitation and Painting, specification number 68318W. The credit amount is $8,202.96. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Twenty-six, approve resolution to deny renewal of 2020, 2021 liquor license for Romania Yucinta Administrator for the estate of Stephen Gomez, trading as The Palace, 181 Trope Avenue, liquor license number 121433019005. Number 27, is a resolution to approve the extension of the UEZ Clean Team Contract with the NBPA for 2020, for the Clean Team Services in the downtown Eastern Avenue, French Street, and Remsen Avenue. Term is January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2020. City of New Brunswick, the amount $96,157.44, New Brunswick City Market Amount of $104,400.60, non-pro-tung. Twenty-eight, approve purchase by Finance Department, under New Jersey Star Contract M0003/89851, software license and related services from SHI International Corporation for Financial Software, a 15-month period commencing October 8th, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2021, not to exceed $30,385. Number 29, approve award of contract with Admins of Tech Incorporated, for proprietary tax utility software, a 12-month period commencing October 8th, 2020, and ending October 7th, 2021, not to exceed $39,508.80. Number 30, approve resolution for referral of zoning amendments to the planning board based on recommendations in the city's master plan reexamination report. Thirty-one, approve resolution authorizing meeting procedures for remote meetings during declaration of emergency. Thirty-two, approve request for use of city property and street closure, requested by the League of Women Voters, GNBA. Park location is Monument Square Park, street location Livingston Avenue between New Street and George Street, and George Street between Livingston Avenue and the driveway of the Heldrich Hotel, for candlelight vigil, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and voter registration, Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, time is 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., non-pro-tung. We have a OEM COVID-19 update report. We have any items for discussion by city council members. We will then go into public comment, and our next meeting is Wednesday, October 21st. The agenda review session is complete. We will now call the meeting to order. The city clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here. We have our Open Public Meeting Act statement. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place, and conduct of all public meetings in municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a 48-hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on October 5th, 2020, as required by law. The New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of the public gatherings. City council is meeting today with all voting members of the city council remotely by telephonic conferencing system. City council meet on a regular schedule, and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing teleconferencing systems. Public participation at public meetings has been revised, and the public may participate through a conference call system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the 48-hour notice, and posted in the back of vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows. Some city employees will also be available via conference call during this meeting as well. All on the conference call have the opportunity to hear a city council meeting. During the portions of the meetings that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted, and the council will not be able to hear any public comment through the conference call system. During the public comment periods, those on the conference call-in lines who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name, and then called upon to speak. After all organized members of the public speak, and they are to speak for once and for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and I will notify you that your time has expired. Public meeting assistant accessing the call-in number should please call City Hall at 732-745-5007. Would you please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please pause for a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, both here and abroad, especially those in battle, especially, again, those who have lost their lives, who have come back wounded, whether it be mental or physical. Thank you for your...
Chairman, I approve that promotion for the move in a minute.
Second.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Next is a report of correspondence by the city clerk's office.
Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no public hearings. We have no ordinances for second reading. We do have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking, Section 1020-010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Adding, 84 Paulus Boulevard, 28 Lee Avenue Apartment 3, and 456 Remson Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, October 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have number two, on first reading, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1041, Electric Scooters, in regard to various provisions.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, October 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have number three, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 520, Barbers and Beauticians, Section 520-010, Regulations, in regard to their hours.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, October 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have the, number four, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Adding, Chapter 2.68, Department of Human and Community Services.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, October 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have resolutions, we have resolutions 1 to 30 through 32.
This conference will now be recorded.
At this time, we are preparing to open this meeting to the public comment on the resolutions only, for up to five minutes per person. In order to ensure that the city council can hear from the interested public, and the public can hear public comment, I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the public call-in. At that time, I will ask you to provide me your last name, first name, and going from A to Z. And after asking three times, I will then close the public comment portion. Again, please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted, and to speak slowly and clearly, for the benefit of all. I will ask that you please remain silent when I initially unmute the phone, so that we can all hear each other, and then begin the speaker registration process. As a reminder, all other members of the public will be muted, in order to assure that the city council can clearly hear and understand the recognized speaker. So we will unmute the phone at this time, and start taking people by their last name, if you call out your last name, if your last name begins with A, B, or C. D, E, or F. G, H, or I. J, K, or L. Cradville, thank you.
Danielle Moore.
Thank you. STU.
Stork, Linda.
Stork, thank you. Y and Z. I'll ask for the second time, anybody A through Z that might have been, please call out your I will ask a third time, for anybody A through Z, last name, if we missed you or were not able to get your name, would you say it out loud now, please? This is the last time? Okay, that'll close up the public portion for the resolutions. All right, we will start with the first name on the list. Again, you have one time up, and the first one up, Madam City Clerk.
Council President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Sir Cradville, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Council, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Just for the record, I want to state there's some trouble getting into the meeting tonight. I had trouble on both of the phone lines that were given, so I did make a call at 5:35 p.m. to 745-5007, which is listed as the technical support number for people who are having trouble getting into the meeting, and I ended up being a voicemail on answering machine, and so I left the message. I was ultimately able to get in, but I wanted to raise this to your attention, that folks that are calling that number may not be getting a first call. I'll ask about a number of resolutions tonight. 2007, the security cameras, can Lady Captain Moore tell us what those are for? Are those going to be to spy on citizens, or is it just around the headquarters, or what?
Well, I can tell you that it's just for inside and outside headquarters.
2009, Johnson &amp; Johnson wants to put up banners, signage. Do you know what the banners or signage will say?
Yes, we have a whole section of that, so we know what the signs are going up, similar to some of the Ruckert signs that are going up on some poles, also going up on some of the walls and things like that, within their property.
2020, this is a real important issue. When the Farron Mall was torn down, Devco said they wanted to develop that site, and you gave them two years to, you know, come up with an approved redevelopment plan before they would have to reopen the section of Church Street that used to run underneath the deck, the part that's closed. And of course, nothing has happened with that development. We're now four years later, approaching the expiration of an extended term, where they were allowed to keep the street closed for an extra two years, after I caught it and brought it to your attention. And I would like to know why you're giving them another two years without having to reopen that public street, and ultimately, if you can give an update on the status of the development there, you know, the cleanup, what's the status?
Mr. Valenti, can you answer that?
Hi, good evening. Specific to the status of the development itself, that I don't have any specific items to report, but specific to the continued closure, there is an ongoing environmental investigation. Actually, there's two separate environmental investigations that are ongoing. One is a result of a leaking fuel oil tank from the county building that went on for decades, and additionally, there is a groundwater investigation related to the previously swift cleaners, as with respect to chemicals from dry cleaning.
Right, right.
Those, both are ongoing. Currently, they are in the sampling stage, and depending on the sampling, over time, the DPS certain guidelines, those, both of those investigations are under the direction of a licensed site remediation professional, an LSRP. And again, depending on results, it may alter the timeline. That's the best I can do as reporting at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Valenti.
Okay, thank you. I don't think any of that prevents the street from being reopened, but it should also spark some real deep thought about whether Devco is the right entity to be developing this. I'll point out, Devco's working on other projects in Atlantic City, and Patterson, and the touch-in. They, of course, have their scheme to demolish the Lincoln Annex School, and build Robert Wood Johnson and other buildings, and they have clearly prioritized all of those other projects over finishing, or putting, even starting, something on that huge piece of land in the center of our downtown. And so I think, rather than just continuing to give them another two years, another two years, another two years, you, as a leader in the city, should step up and demand an open process where we can get something done there, because right now, it's clearly not a priority, and, you know, I don't think they're even able to live up to their basic promises, like reopening the street, if they don't have an approved redevelopment plan on time. So don't let them keep pushing around. Please actually stand up and get something done there. Finally, just comment on the 31, the meeting procedures for remote meetings. I do want to say that I read through most of it, and it seems generally pretty good, but I do, you know, take issue with the parts...
Okay, I think that's your five minutes, Mr. Cradville. I'll tell him, the people, or Mr. Cradville, when he's finished right there, so please don't automatically do it. In fact, if you can get him back on the line, just let him finish up those 30 seconds.
I'm back, I'm back, thank you, thank you. And so, I appreciate you doing that. I do, yep, yep, you just wanted to finish up my point, that there's parts of this that, you know, say you can silence people, or remove people from the meeting if they're shouting, or interrupting, and while neither of those things are good things, you know, I don't want to see that abused, and I don't want, you know, obviously, council members sometimes raise their voices, and sometimes interrupt people, and because there's a time limit, you know, people need to, need to be able to reclaim their time, and sometimes, you know, that time limit leads to people interrupting one another, and I wouldn't want to see people kicked out of the meeting, or muted because of it. So I just want to object to those parts of it, but I am sure you'll adopt it, and we'll continue to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Your time has expired. Madam Clerk, the next person?
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Moore, you are up. If you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, it's 330, hi, my name is Danielle Moore, 333 Thompson Street. First, I would just like to comment on 27.
27, the...
For the cleaning service, for the New Brunswick Parking Authority, for the cleaning.
What number are we talking?
So when you're saying 27?
27, I'm sorry, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, what amount will the parking authority be paying?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What amount will the parking authority be paying to clean these streets?
Mr. Dominguez, can you handle that?
Certainly. So the, whatever the total amount of those two numbers, I think it's right around 200,000 for the year, is the amount that the parking authority will be paid.
Wow, that is outrageous. You raised the price where it was, I believe, close to $150,000. Even though, like I said, I don't still see why the city is paying them this much money. What, does the city feel down because the parking authority's in debt? Because, like I said, they sure don't clean very well to be getting paid this amount. Like I said, I've been showing pictures, it has been a little better, but like I said, the only one that's clean is George Street and Eastern Avenue.
I know, I'm...
Where the counties, for the town...
It was pretty clean.
Oh, oh, I said recently it was pretty clean, but during the, during the time where we were talking about this before the beginning of the year, I don't think they need no increase on pay, and see, when I... And see, when I get to French Street, that's where the county has been having their, uh, street cleaners come through there to clean French Street. And wow, you're the up raises to almost $200,000 more. I think the city's been feeling sorry for the parking authority being in debt. Because that's nowhere near worth $200,000 to be cleaning those things and they don't be cleaned like they're supposed to be.
Okay.
So they're, I just say they're just giving a grant to the New Brunswick Parking Authority on, 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 on that. And, and, um, that's me, number, number seven with the cameras, uh, with the police department. Um, I'm just curious, what's worth $200,000 for cameras to put in the police department into where what? You had police cameras in there, you saw the evidence and what? You still didn't do anything, who did do any work or anything? So what's the use of putting more cameras in there? Were you, do you feel that you're wasting money?
Well, not necessarily more, but we have to replace a lot of the older ones that are 10 or 20 years old in and around the building.
But, but like I said, what, what, what for? You had, you had an officer caught on camera and you saw the evidence, but what is, why do we just know that, wow, you paid this, you see somebody, but you're not charging anybody?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure.
I say that this is a waste of money. If you're going to put up cameras, keep an eye on people and try to make things, people do the right thing and what? You see them do something wrong and you still don't do anything, wow, that's a waste. $70,000 go toward body cameras, so then who brought the police department to there?
Well, no, that the inside cameras all have to be replaced, some of the outside ones have to be replaced. Uh, obviously, we have the software that goes with that. And if they do catch anybody there, um, that's what they catch and that's what they prosecute if they can. But it's just security, basically.
Well, they probably caught one already, they're not going to prosecute him. They took one on camera already, why didn't they prosecute him?
Well, again, this is just for police headquarters.
My last one.
Go ahead.
And the last one is just to 12, if you can give me information on 12, that'd be it.
Okay, number 12 there, Sir Mulryne, can you talk to that?
Yes, this is more, um, CARES Act reimbursements from the county, um, from the stimulus funds regarding the CARES Act. This is, it pertains to reimbursement for salary and wages, um, and overtime for different, uh, city officials that we, we use their salary, or we, uh, have been charged their salary for COVID-related duties. So that's, that's a reimbursement for that.
Thank you. That's it, Ms. Moore?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Uh, next on our list, uh, Madam Clerk?
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Ms. Stork, if you can give your name and address for the record, please?
Linda Stork, Hill Park Boulevard, um, hi. Just to follow up with the, uh, question that Danielle just asked about the, uh, the CARES Act. So certain city officials can get their salaries paid only for the part of their work that's COVID-related? Or, um, does the city just get to pay their salaries with that money?
Mr. Mulryne?
Like their whole salary?
Yes, so we're able to reimburse their whole salary for those city officials, like your OEM employees, um, certain police and fire officials, um, repurposed employees that, you know, were used for different COVID-related duties and the like, we're, we're able to get all that reimbursed.
Right, so they're working on COVID things all the time, full-time?
Um, this was for the initial, initial COVID period, so it was, uh, it covered March through the end of May. So this is when we were at the height of the COVID pandemic and a lot of these officials were, were pretty much doing round-the-clock work for COVID, a lot of, some of our police employees, especially our OEM employees as well.
Okay, now this, uh, this other money, uh, in, uh, number 24, the COVID application, what is that money? I marked for, what are we applying to get the money to do?
Uh, Mr. Dominguez, could you answer that?
Certainly, um, so, uh, the governor issued a, uh, a special grant, uh, program to cities that had an ET district, Neighborhood Preservation Program districts in them, of which, uh, the Esperanza neighborhood in the city of New Brunswick is one. And so we are applying for a grant to, uh, be able to sub-grant business assistance to businesses in that neighborhood as they're the only ones qualified under that particular, uh, grant from the state.
Thank you.
Can any of the money go to the residents of that neighborhood that, uh, don't have it, you know, either were out of work for months and, and, um, did not get a stimulus check? Because they, they couldn't apply for it with their IT number? It only has to be for small business?
Mr. Dominguez, is that?
Yes, the, the funds, the, the funds are, uh, specifically targeted to be used for, uh, small business and business assistance in these neighborhoods.
Okay, um, so, uh, let me ask this real quick before my time runs out. Number 30, so, um, there is the zoning amendment being referred to the planning board on the recommendation of the City Master Plan Reexamination Report. Um, but, but where is that report to see what the, um, what the recommendations are? The, the one that's on, that, that I got on the website, when I searched it, on your website was from 2012. I'm assuming that is not the one we're talking about. And also, it would be really good to put on the website that the time that you decided to have the meetings at 5:30? I happen to remember that from last time, but if I hadn't been in the last meeting, on the website, it says 6:30.
Okay, we will definitely, uh, get that corrected.
So is there a way to access the, um, is there, and is there a way to access the Master Plan Reexamination Report, the new one?
Uh, that's true, Mr. Dominguez?
There is no new Master Plan Reexamination Report yet, we haven't gone out with an RFP, uh, to get one. So these are recommendations from the last reexamen, uh, we felt that, uh, are still valid and worthwhile pursuing.
From the 2012 one?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, so these are zoning changes that were, that were recommended in 2012, but just never done?
Correct.
So if I go to that 2012 report, it'll be the ones that are in there? Okay, all right, and, uh, 28 and 29 are both for extensive, uh, software contracts. Uh, 30 plus, 30 plus thousand for finance software, 39 and a half thousand for tax and utility software. Um, please tell me, when we get all this software, we're going to be able to pay our taxes and our water bills online? Right?
Well, not necessarily, some of the ones that we have are very old, so, um, um, Mr. Mulryne or Mr. Dominguez, uh, maybe you could talk to our 28th and 29, Mr. Mulryne?
Council President? Yes, uh, the plan, the plan with both, both of these services is to, or what the tax utility is to allow residents to pay online.
So it will help the president?
The tax and the water, right?
Yes, tax and water, it's, uh, as soon as conversion is complete and, and the system is up and running, you'll be able to pay both online.
Okay, great, okay, Clerk? All right, thank you, the time of the lady has expired. Uh, anybody else on the list, Madam Clerk?
Council President, there are no more members of the public on the list.
All right, hearing.
Move to resolutions, second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes, except on resolution identify as item number five, I say no.
Duly noted. Council Vice President, Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes, uh, the resolutions are adopted. At this time, we'll have a report of the OEM COVID-19 update. Uh, Director Rawls, Director?
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, uh, brief report, uh, I've seen a rise in the number of daily cases in New Brunswick over the past five weeks. We are encouraging all residents, businesses, and visitors to get tested, wear masks, wash your hands, and social distance whenever possible. In addition, we need everyone, and this is important, we need everyone who tests positive to cooperate on contact tracers. When you get a call about contact tracing, we need some cooperation so we can, this also helps to, uh, reduce the number of cases in the city. So, uh, the, the upcoming test in New Brunswick, uh, Joyce Kilmer Avenue is tomorrow, which is already booked. Uh, the next testing date in New Brunswick will be Thursday, October 15th. Registration will be Monday, October 12th. Uh, as always, you can make your reservations, uh, on, by the phone or online. And the city continues to share updated information of COVID-19 on our websites and social media outlets. And that's it.
Thank you, Director, appreciate that. Uh, city council members who might have something to report, uh, Council Vice President, Nancy Socorro Ludwig, you're, you're up.
Uh, yes, I just want to remind everybody that the deadline is coming for registering to vote. That is October 13th in the state of New Jersey, so you can still get your forms in. It's probably best advised to take them right to the county clerk's office because they're, they're extremely busy right now. So that would, that may be your best bet, and from what I understand, with the registrations, they are a little behind with those, so you may want to hand-deliver it. And then on top of that, please remember to vote and get your ballots into the mail, drop them in the boxes that are around the county. You can go on to the county website and look up the locations for that. You can also take them to the, uh, county offices. And lastly, a lot of people still are under the impression that they are able to vote at the polling locations. This is not true, the only way you can vote at the polling locations is by a provisional ballot or if you are under, um, the ADA guideline. So please be aware of that. I've had a lot of people calling me, they've thrown their ballots out, um, and they don't know, you know, what to do with that type of situation. A lot of people are just unaware of the fact that you cannot go and physically vote at a machine. So please just do all those things and all the information is out there. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, uh, definitely, definitely, there are no voting booths for people to go into. So if you go to the polling place, all they'll do is hand you a provisional ballot. It basically is a paper one, and you just vote for that and they'll take that. But there are no voting booths this year.
Right, right.
Also, the, uh, I believe the census has extended itself to the end of the month, and so our, our census is still working on that. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, um, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I must encourage everybody to get tested and get tested often. Uh, I told people before I lost a sister back in 2003, um, when they finally caught it, she was in stage four already. So just stay be aware, and if there's anybody out there that's listening, to remind you, to go get your mammograms or do self-checks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming, uh, Councilwoman Escobar, do you have anything?
Yes, real quick, um, thank you for reminding, I was going to talk about the census, but you did already. But, um, there's only two activities that are coming up, um, October is also the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and then March, the annual March Against Immunity Violence in the city is on October 17th, so 1 to 3, and it's going to be the first time that it's going to be done virtually. So, um, be on the lookout for the flyers and participate if you can. And also, on October 4th, 6th, from 3 to 6, we have the Corazon Latino, it's going to be also the festival. It's going to be held also virtually, um, so I invite everybody to join those two events coming up, um, in, thank you.
Thank you, uh, any? You get any? Okay, thank you. Again, if you're on there, if this, thank you, please mute, okay, thank you. All right, uh, at this point, we will start our public comment portion at this time. We are preparing to open the meeting to the public, again, for up to five minutes per person, uh, one time up. In order to assure that the city council can hear from the interested public and that the public can hear public comment, again, I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the public call-in. At that time, I'll ask for you to provide me with your last name and first name, starting A and going through Z. After asking three times, I will then close the public comment portion. Again, please be mindful that you're being telephonically transmitted and to speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I will ask that you please remain silent when I initially unmute the phone so that we can all hear each other and begin the speaker registration process. All of the members of the public will be muted in order to assure the city council can clearly hear and understand the recognized speakers first. So, we will start to ask, again, by last name, if your last name begins with A, B, or C, please call out your name. If you see D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L. L, M, N, O.
Danielle Moore?
More, M, N, O, P, Q, R. I'm sorry?
Danielle Moore, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you, Ms. Moore, we got you. M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U.
Stork, Cindy.
Ms. Stork, okay, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z. Anybody else, A through Z, that we did not catch at the time?
Yeah, Charlie Cradville, please.
Mr. Cradville, thank you. Anybody else that we've missed, A through Z, in the public comment portion? Anyone else last time, asking anybody, A through Z? Okay, so we're having no more members of the public who wish to speak. Uh, we will start then alphabetically, um, Madam Clerk, our first person up would be?
Mr. Charlie Cradville, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville, you're up.
Yes, good evening once again, um, can somebody tell me how many shootings there have been so far this month? We're only seven days into the month, I know of at least one shooting.
Uh, this month, I'm not sure.
Did you ask Captain Miller?
Captain Miller, would you want to answer that?
I, I don't have the number available right now.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't know. Um, I spoke to Mr. Barron, I don't know if he's on the line, but I had asked him if he could, uh, you know, see if the mayor was going to comment at all on the shootings, including the, uh, the one where nine people were, were shot and two died. Um, he said he would talk to the mayor about that. Can, can you ask him if he's had a chance to do that and what the, what the, what the outcome is?
Mr. Barron, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Council President. Um, it's obviously still an ongoing investigation and, uh, a lot of work is still being done with this investigation as, uh, Mr. Cradville had posed the question to Colonel Callahan not, not too long ago during one of the governor's updates, who also said it's an ongoing investigation. So, uh, I will follow up with the mayor as more information is learned, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, and, and I have to ask, I know there was a man named James Cahill who was indicted, uh, for racketeering, and I did ask Mr. Barron, didn't hear back, uh, is that, that's not the mayor, is it, was it anybody related to the mayor?
Um, that's the first time.
Uh, Mr. Council President, I take a look into that also. Uh, I did Google some more information on the James Cahill who was mentioned in the indictment that Mr. Cradville is referring to. Uh, the image is certainly not that of the mayor of the city of New Brunswick, uh, and I don't have the information as to whether or not it's a relative of the mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Ms. Cradville.
Okay, would, would, yeah, would Mr. Barron be able to ask the mayor if it's a relative? Yeah, would Mr. Barron be able to ask the mayor if it's a relative of his?
Mr. Council President, I'll gladly follow up on Mr. Cradville's request. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. I noticed you have an ordinance on first reading for scooters. It was an issue that didn't come up in the last meeting, but I know that there's, you know, a lot more scooters here than there were, you know, six weeks ago. Can you comment on this? What is the council doing and what prompted this ordinance?
Just working on between what the state has to say, what the city needs to say, working on our ordinances there. So we're looking into everything, so if you have any comment or anything, or email ideas or whatever, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, no, I have a lot of thoughts on it. I'm curious to hear some of yours. If you, you know, I know we spoke after the last meeting, you said you were concerned about the Rutgers scooter program. Do your colleagues share that view? Is the administration taking any action as a result of that program being rolled out? And I would say rolled out somewhat poorly.
Well, I guess with this ordinance, they're certainly trying to get things in shape there and get everything under control in the city. Any other council member want to comment on anything?
I would just say that I am a little concerned also about scooters and the way, not everybody, but some individuals utilizing them, driving them throughout town. So I do have some concerns in terms of driving, the way that the streets are they using, and also utilizing the police to patrol that. Also, additional tasks for the police to do. But I'm hoping that, you know, the changes will address some of those concerns that I... Thank you.
And I think that's what we're looking into, to see whether or not we can get anybody else besides the police to enforce different things. Go ahead, Mr. Cradville.
I wanted to ask about the Make It Count, yeah, Make It Count program. None of the money has been spent and no plan to spend the money. Maybe Mr. Jones could address that.
I'm sorry, money for what?
Make It Count.
Oh, the Make It Count, okay. Mr. Jones, do you want to comment on that?
Some here, Council President. Yes, none of the money has been spent, again. Yes, we're waiting to, till we get to a justifiable amount to disperse dollars to different agencies and organizations. In the meantime, all of the support that we would normally look for, Make It Count to supply, we've been doing. So we've actually added more services without having to touch any dollars from Make It Count right now. So we know the winter is coming, we know things are going to be really severe, and we also know that giving season is also upon us. So the thought is to make sure that we reinvigorate the program after COVID, and, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. The time of the gentleman has expired, and we will go on to next person, Madam Clerk.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Ms. Moore, you are up, go ahead. Ms. Moore, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Moore, go ahead.
I would just like to ask Mr. Jones, how do you think this scooter thing is working? We were back in traffic meeting about five months ago, it was your idea. How do you think things are going with these scooters?
Mr. Jones, do you want to comment?
Sure. Yes, I wouldn't necessarily say it was my idea. Am I advocate for scooters in New Brunswick, 100%? Do I think the city had a better program than what Rutgers offered, 100%? Do I think that Rutgers program needs some work and some tweaking, 100%? And we're doing that. So Rutgers led the program in the absence of us rolling out a program. So right now, we're doing everything we need to do to clean up their program. But do I think that the scooter program is a good idea, 100%? Just not the way it was rolled out.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
That's why, one reason why I say the Traffic Authority meeting should have been recorded at the time of what was being said, due to where majority in the meeting said that they didn't think it was a good idea with these scooters, due to where it was too dangerous. But these scooters are causing extreme problems, due to where child decided to hit off of Mitchell Avenue on these scooters. Are these scooters supposed to be 18 and older that use these scooters to age limit?
I believe at this time, there is no age limit, something that we're working on.
Well, please do, because I see tons of people on that, on these scooters, and I just mentioned someone just started to fire a car the other day with one of these scooters, where they're becoming to be outrageous. This was like for the college area. Like, if college is nowhere near Joint Summer and Striper Place, where you use so many scooters left on people's lawn for, it's getting outrageous. And I hope the police department, the Rutgers and mayor do something about it, due to where the riders have no respect for people walking on the sidewalks and all. So yes, I hope you do look into it. But I will get back to my... I will ask, please, can someone please share the sign?
Later. Hold on, Mr. Jones.
Can someone please share the sign on the corner of Ball Street and Somerset Street? This is where the one-way sign, one-way street sign, it's been knocked over and many cars are going up the one-way street.
Okay, and that is Ball and what?
Somerset Street, yes.
And Somerset? Okay, well, have somebody check into that.
I also like to thank Ms. Cheryl Smith, Director Rawls, and the Fire Department for moving a wire on the corner of French Hill Street. I thank you for your help. I will say, great job to the cleaning department with the parks, cleaning up the parks, and also to the workers that did a great job cleaning Ball Street and Redwood Avenue. I still feel that the city needs to be doing more cleaning, because, like I said, that's what causes these rats and rodents, where people throwing out food and people not taking care of their lawn. Where I said about a minute ago, wow, outrageous, look at the post office on these streets. Things like this bring rodents in. Like I said, wow, not too happy to see this, like I said, due to where the city doesn't care about anyone cleaning their properties, and that's what draws rodents in. And I have to say, wow, it's outrageous, where I hope the authorities start getting out, telling people stop throwing food out, stop opening the sewers, cleaning their properties, because, like I said, too many rodents, another situation, again, this year. And then the last thing I will ask you, ask you for, that's where for a tree to be removed on this place that's close to 291 Columbus Place, is where the tree is leaning over too much and it's dangerous to house, be hit a storm, it will fall.
Okay, and that's 291 Columbus Place?
It's next to it, it's the only tree there, it's not right in front of 291, it's next to it. You can't miss it, it's the way it's leaning over.
Okay, I'm sure, Mr. Blunt, do you have that? You'll check out Columbus Place?
Yes, sir, I'll check both on the sign at Ball and Somerset, and also the tree at near or at 291 Columbus Place. I'll check on my way home.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Moore, your time has expired. Before we get to the next person, Mr. Jones, did you have something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to correct something for the record. Kid that was hit on the scooter on Mitchell Avenue was riding, was not riding one of the scooters for the program. He was actually riding a Razor scooter, which have been in the city for these 15 years, 15, 20 years. So I just don't want us to start throwing around these claims that are not accurate. It's my street, I know about the actual accident. The actual Rutgers program as well is not supposed to, the idea of the scooter program was to make it available to residents of the city of New Brunswick. The city program that we were planning to put together was also for all of the residents and not just the Rutgers students. So there is no geofence around any particular neighborhood where folks cannot ride. So in the city of New Brunswick, if you're a resident of New Brunswick, you should be able to ride those scooters from Van Dyke all the way down to Nielsen, if you like. And so the thought is, again, the program, again, has some chinks in it. I'm not defending Rutgers at all, they definitely have some work to do, but the overall concept itself rolled out properly and with the proper education, awareness, and structure would be a benefit to folks. So I just wanted to make sure that we clear that up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Next up, Madam Clerk.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Ms. Stork, you're up, go ahead.
Hi, yes, hi again. So after the last council meeting, I was left feeling, I was left feeling upset, and I had to sit with my feelings for a minute and kind of sort it out. When I tried to explain, it started with the comment by Councilperson Fleming about, like, where was the outrage and the marches against what had happened over here on Delafield, over here on Delafield Street? And I was informed, when I said with the different type of an outrage, I was informed by him, he cut in to say it was not. But it absolutely is, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you how I know. Because I lost the Godson to the senseless street violence of criminals. And the two that killed him over on Lee Avenue are sitting in prison now, but that's not bringing him back, obviously. And I was really, really sad, and I was really, really mad, but it was not the same kind of outrage as when one of my student's brother, older brother, one of my previous student's older brothers was killed, shot in the back by a police officer, and killed. You know, another young unarmed black man. I did not know him as well, he had chaperones on one of her class trips, so I knew him a little bit. So it wasn't as personal, so I wasn't as sad, but I was more outraged. I was more outraged because we paid, we paid somebody that was supposed to be serving and protecting the community to kill him, shooting him in the back, supposedly by accident. Like, I don't know how you shoot somebody in the back by accident, but the thing is too, it was so preventable. I mean, not only are we paying him to serve and protect, there had been a lot of previous complaints, there were so many red flags, it was ridiculous. I don't know how many people that had problems with this particular officer filed an official formal complaint, but I did, both verbally and in writing. I still have it. And it clearly went straight into the circular file. I mean, he was promoted, and then he killed Sean, and it's just, it's so, it's a different kind of outrage. And it was just really frustrating to be shut down by the council person like that and told that, no, it's not, it's the same. No, it's not. I live here close by where this horrible tragedy happened, over on, you know, Delafield Street is right by my house, but, and it's not, it's not, it's a horrible tragedy, it's very sad, and we would very much like to have some information on it. Yeah, this isn't the kind of thing you can solve with, you know, with a march or with a protest. We need, I mean, some police work needs to be done and find out who these criminals are, and get them off the street so that people can sleep at night. It's just, I don't know, that's the outrage, and the outrage has been, there's been two, you know, high-profile scandals on the department, and the people, the authors of the scandals are still being paid with our tax money. And it's so disheartening, and they're people that all the kids know. And it's just, it's so, I know for a fact, I know of one New Brunswick native who went all through, you know, all through New Brunswick Public School, through Rutgers, in doing criminal justice, graduated summa cum laude, and by the time he graduated, he was so disgusted, that was the year that another unarmed black man was shot and killed by the police, while he was face down on the ground. And he even didn't have good experience with the Rutgers police, police doing his internship, and he just, I mean, people are just, it's just too, it's just too much. We're not going to be able to attract, you know, good people with the reputation the department has. And I would like to know, with this new police reform initiative that's starting in Rutgers, I certainly hope that our police department hopes to take advantage of that.
No, thank you.
Because we need to.
Your time has expired, I'm sure. Our police and our detectives are working extremely hard on trying to solve all crimes in our city, and I think they're doing as best a job that they can do, so we're working on that part, too. Madam Clerk, anybody else on our list?
Council President, there are no more members of the public on the list.
Okay, if there's no other members of the public who wish to speak, that we...
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Egan, motion, second?
Second, motion, motion.
Yes, Mr. Egan has made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your time.